The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, June 17, 2019, 7:00 PM. I will ask you to all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilwoman Tompkins will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Yes.
Motion to add the following items under Section 5 Appointments. Number 4, Housing Authority Resignation. Number 5, Housing Authority Appointment. And move the Appointments and Reappointments to Boards and Commissions down to Number 6.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. This evening, we are honored to have some very special people here to begin our meeting. We have some young folks from our schools who were the winners of the Memorial Day Essay Contest. And I would just like to ask Dan Hurley, could you just say a couple of words? I know that you're instrumental in doing some of these things and getting it together. And just tell us about how this works. And I know you're in charge of that whole day, so you're an important guy. Thanks.
Not for long.
Come on.
Well, it's certainly my pleasure to talk about Memorial Day because it has definitely been my passion since 1985 to be the chairman of the Memorial Day Association with a small period of time where Scott took over. But anyways, we started out with a hit and a miss in the beginning of trying to do this essay contest. One year we had it, one year we didn't. But how it evolved was from the Voice of Democracy Contest that was run at the VFW, where they had the democracy winner. We would have the democracy winner come to the ceremonies after the parade, and that person would deliver their speech that they did for Voice of Democracy Contest. And we decided to expand it and see what happened. Well, over the years, we've been able to refine it and get it squared away a little bit. And through the help and organization of Joan Clistro, the Board of Education, because she's the point person, she's been making it happen. And for several years now, she's got it down to a science where what happens is each school winds up picking a winner. They write an essay, and then I guess somehow they, I have no idea, I'm not involved, I don't pick winners. And a winner is chosen from each of our elementary schools and our middle school. And of course, we provide a $50 gift card to the winner. And this year, we are proud to bring to you today three of the four winners to present their winning essays, which I found pretty amazing when I heard them read on Memorial Day. So if, with your permission, I'd like to start calling them up to read them.
That would be great, and thanks for all that you do.
Oof. By the way.
Yes.
Next year, it's Dave Dudek.
Okay. All right.
I'm trying to retire again.
I know. Yep. We just won't let you, Dan.
Yes, yes. See, I have to tell you, because he'll tell you anyways, you know, I had to get somebody younger than me, because he's seven days younger, so he qualifies.
There you go. All right.
All right, let's get started here.
Okay, great.
We're going to have Daniel Kane, and he's from Tofflon School. And he's going to come over here, and we're going to try and set this up so he can read it to you. Okay, try that.
A Day to Honor. Memorial Day is a day to remember and honor all the soldiers who have served in the armed forces of the United States of America. On this day, we show respect to all who have served and sacrificed everything by giving their lives for our country. Most people know someone who has served in our military forces, and it is a great day to have pride in our country and be proud of those who have gone to great lengths for our country. My grandfather, Alan Kane, served in the United States Army during the Korean War. He states, "Memorial Day means remembering the soldiers who have given their lives for the freedoms we enjoy today." This is a strong statement to me. It means that we will always remember the soldiers, and we will know what they have done and why they have done this. These brave soldiers have loved our country so dearly and kept us safe from threats of war and danger. My father, Michael Kane, grew up feeling very proud of his dad. He said, "Memorial Day means never forgetting the sacrifices that were made to preserve freedom." I am very proud that my dad, or my grandfather, did help heap these freedoms for me today. It makes me think about everything that we have done and every soldier that has done this while serving. Memorial Day shows that they were brave and sacrificed a lot, sometimes even their lives. I also have an uncle who served in the Army National Guard. His name is Staff Sergeant Nathan Starr. I feel very grateful towards him because he served in Afghanistan and did many brave things. He never knew what dangers could come at him, and this is why I feel so proud and passionate about him. He told me, "When I'm marching in a parade and I see the people cheering on the sidelines, I'm remembering about the fights and dangers that many of my fellow soldiers and myself have gone through. I am so glad that he has returned and is not wounded. I am glad to know that he is always ready to serve our country. Today, I feel like I am always being protected from threats anywhere in this world. Today, I feel watched over, cared for, and very honored by everyone who has served in our military. Thank you to everyone who has, thank you to every veteran and to those who are still serving today. Thank you for the sacrifices you have made, and as my uncle Nathan Starr told me, thank you for staying the course."
Thank you.
I don't know how it came about, but on Memorial Day, Daniel's uncle was with him onstage, the one that he was talking about. So that was pretty cool. Emma Portius, and she's from Wheeler.
Have you ever heard of Memorial Day? I'm sure you probably have. Parades, patriotic music, flags, and red, white, or blue are some of the things we do on the last Monday at bay. Some people may think of it as a day to relax in the sun, but it was really first made to celebrate the many people who died in the Civil War, giving their lives to give us freedom. It now celebrates all who have given their lives in the military to fight for our freedom. Have you ever heard of Decoration Day? Before becoming a federal holiday, Memorial Day was called Decoration Day. John Logan, the commander of the Grand Army Republic, created the holiday to try and unite the countries after the Civil War. On Decoration Day, people formed wreath committees to decorate the graves of the Civil War soldiers. After World War I, Decoration Day evolved into a federal holiday and was named Memorial Day. It was made official in 1971 by the Act of the U.S. Congress. Later, it was changed to honor Eddie Bebber of the U.S. military, who lost their lives fighting for our freedom. On this special day, we have a memorial site at 3:00 PM to honor those who have died fighting in the war. And every year, the president or vice president lays a wreath on the unknown soldier's grave in Arlington National Cemetery. This honors any service person who died in the war and was never identified. My great-grandfather Challenger Wytham is buried in Arlington National Cemetery and was in the World War II Air Force. I think of him on Memorial Day. Memorial Day is one of the most misunderstood holidays because many people think of it as a day to have cookouts. It could also be referred to as the first unofficial first day of summer. What people should be doing is thinking about those who lost their lives fighting for our country. You don't have to place flags on graves or flowers to celebrate the people who lost their lives fighting for our freedom. Just a simple thought, thank you, soldiers, and happy Memorial Day.
It never ceases to amaze me, the talent that we have in our young children. Lastly, we have, but not least for sure, from the middle school, Michaela Dimmick. I got it right for once.
When I was younger, Memorial Day was just a day in my birth month. It was just a day to deck myself out in red, white, and blue. I would always have the Monday off school, so I'd go see a parade. But as I've gotten older, I've gotten to know what Memorial Day really means to me. Instead of just a parade-watching day off from school, Memorial Day, also known as Decoration Day, became a day to mourn the loss of soldiers who lost in battle. It was known as Decoration Day originally because on this day, Americans used to decorate these soldiers' graves. Some people still do this today, but calling it Memorial Day has made it into more of a day of honoring rather than decor. Decoration Day was originally only made for soldiers who had died in the Civil War, but as another major conflict arose, people decided to celebrate all of the past soldiers. Memorial Day used to be on May 30, but in 1968, Congress passed the Uniform Monday Holiday Act, which changed the holiday to always be the last Monday in May, so that federal employees would get a three-day weekend. This same law also declared Memorial Day a federal holiday. Some people who competed against me to read their essays to all of you today could say that they have a family member or family friend who they might be mourning on this day. I would like to be able to proudly say that, but I can't. I've never been able to, but I can still thank those brave soldiers who decided to risk their lives for us and our freedom. I recently learned about human rights in school. These soldiers bought us time so that we, as citizens of the United States of America, may grow our country. Today is the day that I can be proud that these amazing people put their lives on the line so that I could live mine freely. Memorial Day, Decoration Day, whatever we want to call it, however we choose to celebrate it, I will always know that these people chose to let me live my life, knowing they would be risking their own.
Unfortunately, our Linden Street winner, who was Cheyenne Sorrell, was not able to be here this evening. And you missed another good one by her not being here. But they were all good, and I think they all deserve another round of applause. This is a program that I personally am kind of proud of because I kind of like started it. But it's something that has evolved, and people, like I said, Joan Clistro, and those that have to choose these winners, God bless them, because I'm sure it's not easy. And I'm glad we're able to, as a town, to carry out this program, which is now kind of like a staple in our Memorial Day celebration. So, thank you.
Agreed. Thank you very much. Dan, don't go away. Hey there. We have a surprise for Dan. Oh, don't say oh, no. Dan Hurley and I have been friends for, let's not say how many years, but we've been friends a very long time. And when we learned that Dan is going to turn over his duties, we thought, there's no person in Plainville that should receive a proclamation from the town better suited than Dan Hurley. He has given decades and decades of time to this effort. It's a lot of organization. It's a lot of control. The only thing he usually can't control is the weather, but you've done a pretty good job with most of that. So, on behalf of the town council, I have a proclamation that I would like to read for you, Dan, because you are really an important person to us.
Thank you.
All right. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas for over half a century, Plainville, Connecticut has celebrated and remembered those who fought and died for our freedom by means of the Memorial Day Parade. And whereas, over 42 years ago, Dan Hurley became one of the volunteer participants helping with the celebration, but desired to become more involved, and in 1985, Dan attended a Memorial Day Parade Committee meeting, where by the end of the night, various members had slowly gone their separate ways, leaving only himself and Peggy Walters." Does that sound about right?
Exactly right.
And whereas, it was then that Dan Hurley humbly assumed the charge of chairman of the Memorial Day Parade Committee for the next 34 years to follow, holding countless committee meetings many months before the parade, lining up and organizing interested participants, making lists, checking them twice, making sure all branches of the military were invited and represented, overseeing and coordinating the activities and events on Parade Day, anxiously watching the weather forecast, safely securing the parade route, making sure politicians were in attendance, watching the skies, awaiting precisely timed military flyovers, seeing that school bands and musical groups were strategically dispersed throughout the procession, dance and karate studios, baton twirlers, all had room for demonstration, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, Little League soccer teams were lined up in their uniforms, DARE students were proudly in line with the police department, sending up prayers that the fire department would make it to the end of the parade without a 911 call, and always saving room for Jojo Robar, so he could proudly ride his bicycle all decked out in red, white, and blue, just to name a few of the responsibilities. And whereas, Dan Hurley, a veteran himself, served as liaison to the Veterans Council during his six-year term on the town council, will no doubt continue to make sure all veterans and families thereof are remembered and honored for their unselfish acts to protect this country, and will continue to be part of the celebration honoring their service on Memorial Day. And now therefore, we, the members of the town council, on behalf of all citizens and parade watchers, would like to recognize and thank Dan Hurley for his leadership, guidance, compassion, and volunteer spirit as he steps aside as chairman of the Memorial Day Parade Committee, and hopefully will enjoy next year's parade in the front row, sitting in a nice, comfortable chair somewhere in the shade. Dated at Plainville, Connecticut, the 17th day of June 2019, it is signed by myself, Deborah Tompkins, Danny Carrier, Ty Cox, Jesse Nazzo, Rosemary Moranti, and Christopher J. Wazorko. Thank you so much.
You know, this is a, it's kind of humbling. No, it's definitely humbling. I want to thank everybody because this piece of paper describes our town. We have a town full of people that are patriotic, that volunteer, that step forward and help. Because if they didn't, none of this that's on this paper would ever happen. It's all because of the citizens of Plainville that this happens. It's not me. My phone rings constantly the month and a half before the parade, and it's like people saying, "I want to be in the parade. I want to be, I've got this. Can I put it in the parade?" Heck, yeah. Why not? As long as you know what red, white, and blue is, you can be in the parade. I'm grateful for having had this opportunity to serve and be part of the whole thing. And I look forward to pushing Dave out front next year and being right there behind him to help him. So, it's going to be great. New ideas, new thoughts, new things. It's going to be wonderful. The parade will be great again next year, and like I said, thank you for all the years of support that this town has given me.
We will continue on with the rest of our meeting. Up next, we have three different public hearings. The first one is an ordinance establishing the, oh, I'm sorry, Catherine. My sincere apologies. I'm rushing the program here. We have a presentation from Catherine Marks regarding the 2020 Census Local Complete Count Committee, so.
Well, that's all going to be really hard to top off. Boy, those essays are beautiful, and it sounds like you have just a wonderful town here. My name is Catherine Marks, and with me is Mark Plumlee, supervisor, partnership specialist. So, we're going to go through a short presentation about the 2020 Census, particularly why it is so very important to have an accurate count of the Town of Plainville, why it is safe and secure, and very easy. Can you all see the presentation? Okay. So, first off, the 2020 Census, the decennial census itself is mandated by the Constitution, Article 1, Section 2. It's to be conducted every 10 years. The first census was done in 1790. Our founding father, Thomas Jefferson, was the director of the census. In 1790, he was counting an estimated 3.9 million people. This year, in 2020, we will be counting an estimated 330 million people in over 140 million households. In the Constitution, the census determines the amount of seats that are allocated to each state in the House of Representatives. But the census data does a lot more than that. The census data also defines the congressional and state legislative districts, school districts, and voting precincts. It also determines how the federal government, how the money is flown from the federal government to the state. An annual amount of $675 billion flows from the federal government down to the states, and this is all determined by census data. It also is used by governments, businesses, and communities for the purpose of planning. So, as you can see, the census data definitely shapes our communities. For the 2020 Census, our goal is simple. We're going to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place.
So, one thing we like to also really impress upon when we go out to communities and we talk across the state is really to talk about data protection. As we all know, that's a big concern for people in general in their lives today. So, we are actually bound by a federal law, Title 13, that we can only utilize your data for statistical purposes only. And if anyone's ever gone onto 2020census.gov, if you're a real data person, you know, there's so much data statistics out there. But again, it's all very statistical-driven, and we just really like to emphasize that out to the general public. We cannot share any of the information that we receive from the census with any government or state or federal agency. So, that, you know, is everything from Homeland Security to ICE to any of those agencies. Again, it is for statistical purposes only. And we are actually sworn for our lifetime to protect that data. So, even if we don't work for the government in a year or two, we are actually sworn that we have to protect that data for life. And if we actually break that oath, well, as you can see there in bold, we could actually be subjected to a prison term of up to five years and/or $250,000 fine. And also, what's important, as you'll see a little further into the presentation, this is going to be the first year that the census is actually going to be done through mobile apps and technology. So, because of that, we actually have some of the brightest brains working within the government to actually make sure that the cybersecurity programs meet the highest standards possible. The data is encrypted to protect privacy, restricted access, and responses are kept on private internal network behind the walls, behind firewalls. And I know myself, I've actually personally, you know, been involved in the data and actually capturing locally at homes. And I can tell you, like, when we're on the smartphone technology, like, if I were to come to one of your homes and take the data, as soon as I hit send, the data's already gone. I can't even, as an individual, pull the data back. It immediately goes behind firewalls right from that point forward.
This is an infographic of the design of the census. The census is actually the largest peacetime operation that's done in the United States. It's quite a task to do. In the lower left-hand corner, you're going to see establishing where to count. First and foremost, we need to know where people live or could live. We start with a national database of mailing addresses, and then we take input from local towns for changes, aerial photography, and we do fieldwork. Once we understand where people live or could live, we move to the upper left-hand corner for motivating people to respond. Our goal is to get as many self-responses as possible. In such, we've created the partnership program that both Mark and I are a part of. We also will be doing a large targeted national and social media campaign. But we are here today because one of the things that we would like to do is form partnerships with trusted leaders and communities so that we can ensure that people understand again that the census is safe, easy, and secure, and that we get people to self-respond to the census. Over in the right-hand column is counting the population. As Mark said, for the first time ever, you'll be able to respond to the census via the internet, phone, or by paper copy. In March of 2020, almost all households will receive a notice to respond to the census. And again, we would hope that through our partnerships that we get a large self-response. If they do not respond to the census, then they get the knock on the door, and those are the enumerators. Those enumerators cost a lot of money to send out to the households. So, we are making it as easy as possible for people to self-respond to the census. All of this is done so that we can release the numbers, send the apportionment numbers to the President of the United States by December 31, 2020, and then to the states in the spring of 2021.
So, of course, I'm not going to go back through because, as you can see, these are the four types of, you know, ways to actually participate in the census. And we also will be supporting 12 non-English languages, and those will be supported online and also through the phone. So, those are like, you know, of course, Spanish is definitely one of the languages, and I'm not sure if it's included in this slide, the other languages, but they are the dominant languages beyond the Spanish languages. And then, we actually support 59 other non-English languages through video and print guides. And we also will be supporting American Sign Language Braille in large print.
This is just a timeline of some of the milestones that we hit and some of the milestones that we are working towards. In 2018, we launched the partnership program. We began recruiting, and we started to form complete count committees. The state of Connecticut has formed a complete count committee, and Lieutenant Governor Susan Bysiewicz is head of that committee. In 2019, we'll be opening up field offices. These are not forward-facing offices, but they are field offices. In the state of Connecticut, we will have three, Hartford, Danbury, and New Haven. 2020, our advertising will begin in earnest. Census Day is April 1, 2020. And then, when we have to do the non-response follow-ups, that will begin in March and go through July, and that's the enumerators coming out and having to do the fieldwork door by door. Again, all of this is to send the apportionment council to the President of the United States by December 31, 2020, and then redistricting to the states in the spring of 2021.
So, another big part of what we do while we're out here talking with the communities is also to, you know, recruit, you know, individuals through the community. So, part of that is, we actually have two websites. One is the 2020census.gov/jobs. That's really where the bulk of the individuals will actually be hired for the enumeration. We have a smaller one that's going on, as Catherine said, for address canvassing, which will start like in, actually, in the next week or two, if they already haven't started in this community. But the bigger, you know, enumeration is actually in the really April, May, June, July timeframe of next year. And really there, what we do is, we really encourage people to, you know, apply. They only need to apply once. Because like across the state of Connecticut, as an example, we will have approximately across the state, probably in the neighborhood of about 9,000 to 10,000 enumerators across the whole state. of about 9,000 to 10,000 enumerators across the whole state when we do our enumeration. Nationwide, it's about 300,000. So it's a big, it's actually the largest non, it's the largest peacetime operation actually in the United States when we do the census every 10 years. And of course, we do a lot of events locally across the state and locally to actually, you know, talk about the jobs that are available. And then we also have a smaller portion of jobs where individuals go to usa.jobs.gov. Those jobs are really to support our census offices, as Catherine said, in the New Haven, the Hartford and the Danbury. There's about, on average, about 18 to 25 positions in each of those offices, and those are actually higher level paying jobs. The enumerators will actually be paid in this area of the state $21 an hour plus mileage.
So we're here to talk about, we have obstacles that we know to do the census, and we're here to talk today about having you be some of our trusted voices. Some of the obstacles that we need to deal with is we have an increasingly mobile population, that we have a general low response to our surveys. People get a lot of surveys in the mail, and it's a general low response. So we know we're going to overcome these obstacles through trusted voices. And who are these trusted voices? Our partners are elected officials, their colleges, universities, their community organizations, associations. And what we would like to work with our partners about is we'd like them to help us spread the news about the impact of why the complete count committee is so important to our communities and our state, and that, again, our goal for the 2020 Census is to count every person living in the United States, that the responses are private and confidential. And of course, as Mark says, we are hiring thousands of people, and that in itself is quite an effort.
And this is really a slide that really just talks about all of the different promotional opportunities that we actually provide out to all the communities, our different partners. As you will see here, we actually gave boulders here to your town manager, which you'll give to, which you all have there. And that's just actually a very small sampling of what we have. I was just in another, you know, first selectman meeting, and we actually sent all the logo information over because he, the first selectman, said, could we get the logo and put it on our website so that it was there front and center for people to see ongoing until we do the 2020 Census? But we also have posters. We have a lot of different language content, you know, like I have a team down in Bridgeport, you know, we pretty much do everything. We give a lot of the information all out in Spanish because all of this is also done in Spanish. And then we do a lot of articles, social media content. And what we'll do is make sure that we send over actually links out to all that information, you know, later on tonight. But it's just really to get everyone engaged and to really get everyone to understand the census is coming quicker than we think.
So as Robert said in the agenda, what we're here today is to talk and ask if the town of Plainville would like to do a complete count committee. A complete count committee is the organizational form to show that you are interested in the census and that you believe that the town of Plainville and its residents would benefit from your support of the census. The complete count committee can be anywhere from three to 250 people. We have them building throughout the state of Connecticut. And who should be involved? It's dependent on the towns, but their elected leaders, their community leaders. The gentleman here who's retiring from the Memorial Day Parade, I think we could get him on board, and we would certainly have a successful census in Plainville. And it's easy to get started. We're here to be your support system. It's an important committee to have, to get ready for the March 2020 census. Yeah. So your town manager and I talked a little bit about Plainville. And what this map shows with us is, again, we have resources. This map comes from census.gov/rome. Rome means Response Outreach Area Mapper. And what that does is it uses the 2010 census along with some ACS information, which is the American Community Survey. And what it does is it helps us identify areas that will have a high, low self-response rates. So where we have areas where we need to go in and make connections and have these areas be targeted. The town of Plainville has four census tracts, 4204, 4205, 4206 and 4207. And I'm sure based on this map, you can, you know, underlay, you know, exactly where these communities are. As you can see, track number 4205 has an anticipated low response rate of 20.6%. That means almost 20 people, 20% of the people in that area, based on our data, will not self-respond. And that's one of the things that we want to work on. So the other thing that this rome does is when you toggle over that census track 4205, it will give us housing demographic socioeconomic data at this census level. And what I can see there, looking at this data, is, and Robert has these, so on an email, maybe he can, Robert, you can send them over to him, the work that you and I were doing. What we can see here on this area is that this track 4205 has a high renter occupied housing units, almost 43.1%. So if I were working with you to do the Plainville Complete Count Committee, one of the things I might say is, can we get some of those, do you have an organization of the landlords there so that we can get them involved? Maybe put posters near their mailboxes so people know to get to their mail and fill out the census? So this is a tool, a very useful tool, that we can use to help have a successful complete count committee and therefore have an accurate count of Plainville.
And we are almost there, so just to let you know. So I think this is, we've got maybe this and one other slide. So these are all the different resources that we explain to people that are out there. As an example, we actually have a data dissemination team. Like, I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the chief financial officer was there. So we can all imagine the chief financial officer. He started asking a lot of statistical information. I said, give me your card, I'll get you with our data dissemination specialist because sometimes we get very technical questions like that. We just have to put someone to, you know, a specialized individual. But these are all, we do different workshops in Rhode Island. We actually just did one, it was a full-day session, two different workshops. It was really explaining how all our data works. I tell people, if you're really into data, go onto 2020census.gov. You can go right into the state of Connecticut. You can drill right down to your community. You can see all the data that we're even talking about here today. And then, as Catherine said, we actually have about 130 surveys that actually, the census actually does on a yearly basis across this country. The American Community Survey is one of them. Like, for a lot of people, when you talk about this unemployment rate that's done monthly, the census is actually the one that compiles all the data for the unemployment rate. And so it's far-reaching. And also, you know, there's just a lot at the census.gov Academy site here as well.
So like all of us, we're on social media. So if you would please follow us and share the information, that's the easiest way to do it. But that concludes our presentation. And again, Madam Chair and council members, we really appreciate your time today. And, you know, we've given our information to Robert. If you have any questions now or later on, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. It's certainly an enormous task you have.
No, thanks again. Huge task. And I guess, Robert, you will be speaking with us about what we can do to help facilitate some of this and...
Could certainly put together some names or perhaps to put together a, you know, not a large, but, you know, but some key people to serve perhaps on a complete count committee, bring it back to the council in July and perhaps recognize them. And town staff could work with them to, you know, to hopefully complete this as, as...
Okay.
As complete as possible.
As we can, do our best, right?
Yes.
Thank you again.
We're here to help, and thank you again for your time.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, moving on to the public hearing. We have three of them this evening, and I will ask Carol to read the announcement for those, please.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM-ish on Monday, June 17th, 2019 in the municipal center to consider proposed ordinance, entitled ordinance establishing fourth quarter transfers for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, and additional appropriation of $290,000 from undesignated fund balance, and proposed ordinance entitled illicit discharge and stormwater connection ordinance. Copies of said proposed ordinances and appropriations are available for public inspection in the office of the town clerk dated at Plainville, Connecticut this 13th day of June.
Thank you. Okay. Robert, can you just give a very quick, very brief overview of, number one, the ordinance establishing our fourth quarter transfers? This is something we do every year, and it's required for us to balance out the year end.
Yes, sure. We have copies of the proposed transfers upfront here, if anybody wants to take copies of them or have copies of them. Basically, we're looking to transfer from four different accounts, the total of $539,658 to a number of accounts on the lower half of the sheet totaling the same amount. I will tell you that, based on some discussions that have occurred since the publishing of the public hearing, that we're recommending a reduction of the transfers by $4,500. We were talking about moving some dollars into the senior center, doctors' costs, but that those funds are going to be covered from other items. So the amount of money that we're looking for transferred this evening, when we, when the council gets to their final decision in the, you know, during the meeting on their new business, that number, we're recommending that that number be slightly reduced. I will say that a good portion of that amount, while $539,000 sounds like a lot of dollars, and it is a lot of dollars, $382,558 of that amount is basically a transfer from, to the debt management fund, from the debt service line item. This is a transfer because we have some, we had anticipated that we were going to be spending down some principal and interest in the current fiscal year. It actually got pushed off to next year. So what that means is that there's going to be a surplus this year, and we're going to use a good portion of that debt management in next year's budget. So it's simply a transfer of dollars to the debt management fund from the debt management line item. Rest of them are mostly in line items that are really difficult to predict. You know, items such as auto repair and maintenance, maintenance contracts, buildings and grounds repair, equipment repair, those types of items that are really estimates that, you know, we have some that turn out to be good. We have some that don't turn out to be not so good. So for one example, you will see, for example, under elections, we're looking for $10,000 to be transferred. Part of that is because we budget for three, you know, basically votes, and we ended up with four this year. So as a result of that, we need some additional dollars in there. And the four votes this year were two on the budget. There was a primary, and there was an election. So generally, we budget for, you know, a primary, an election and one vote on the budget. So in this particular, most years, we can get away with that. This particular year, we were not able to. We ended up with some additional street line painting this year as well as a result of, you know, attempts to put down better and additional street markings, some of that to be used for traffic calming purposes. And to a certain degree, that has been, you know, somewhat productive, but it did end up costing us, you know, more than what we had anticipated. And again, the auto repair and maintenance, the repair and maintenance in the buildings and grounds and whatnot, you know, when a roof starts leaking, you know, we can't wait till the following year to get it fixed. We need to get it fixed right away. And there was some, in the buildings and grounds repair, there was the, we generally have enough money for one roof repair. This year, we had two roof repairs that needed to be done, one in the, down at the roadways, and the other one was in the police department. So that was a good portion of the reason why we need an additional $10,000 in that particular line item. That's a quick summary.
Okay.
So I can answer any questions that might...
Okay. Thank you. If nobody on the council has any questions or anything to add, I'll open up the public hearing for public comment. Everybody okay with all? All right. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing regarding our fourth quarter transfers for fiscal year June 30th, 2019? Does anybody wish to speak? Mr. Kislak?
John Kislak, 65 Forestville Avenue. Are we still going to have the other one with the additional appropriations? That's separate from this?
That's the next one.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I got a little bit confused, but this is one of the questions. Mr. Lee kind of answered them. When I was thinking this over, you had like nine items were rounded off to the nearest $1,000, and five were rounded off to the nearest $100. And I think the question was kind of answered. I know you have to estimate, and you have to make these two numbers balance. If we come to the good at the end, where does the money left over go? Does it go back into our undesignated fund balance?
Absolutely. And the reason why the numbers are rounded off is because we don't know where we're going to end up at the end of June. Yes, the money would, and we've been conservative here as well. So I'm pretty confident that we'll probably use less than this with respect to the transfers.
Okay. I didn't have any argument with it. I know we have to pay for these things. We have to do it. It's just a simple question, but I'll be up on the next one, too.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak to the fourth quarter transfers? Anybody else? Okay, thanks. I will close that and go on to number two. Number two is an additional appropriation of $290,000 from unassigned fund balance. Robert, would you just fill in the specifics? It's only two things, but just give context.
One is the police overtime. We have historically gone over in the police overtime, one of the reasons why we raised the police overtime dollar amount from $450,000 to $550,000 for next year. We've probably averaged over the last five years somewhere, you know, north of $600,000 in police overtime. I will tell you that a good portion of that increase is a result of the training requirements that keep coming down from the state with regards to our police officers, that a good amount of, of that overtime, we have to train our police officers with some of the new requirements that come forth, and that a lot of times, in order to get them trained, it involves overtime, especially for those officers who work third shift, and they're going to training, you know, first shift, you know, that could require, you know, overtime requirements. In addition, we have, we're down three officers right now. It takes close to a year to replace these officers. We have two of them that have come out of the academy, but they have to go through field training. Field training could take up to two, two and a half months. So you'll see two police officers in a car. One is the trainer, and one is the trainee. And, you know, until they're able to go out on their own to fill in some shifts when other officers are on vacation, that could generate some overtime as well. So... That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else, does anybody wish to speak to item number two, additional appropriation of $290,000 from unassigned fund balance?
Anybody wish to speak?
Just the additional appropriation was $250 for the police and $40,000 for pension, and that was discussed during the budget process with, you know, some dollars that were become available.
Two parts.
Yes.
Mr. Kislak?
Can you change the air conditioner? It's really cold in here. There's like a wind blowing here.
Go ahead, John. It's blowing up here, too. It's blowing up here too.
John Kissel, 65 Forestville Avenue. I don't have a problem with the overtime because I think our chief does a good job. But the question I have about it is that overtime and everything that the police do in town, it's, it's not just traffic, is it? Every bit of overtime they do on everything. I mean, parades, balloon festival, everything is the
Card appearances.
Yeah, everything is it.
Report filings that have to be done within a certain amount of time.
It does not include private duty.
Okay, because private duty, they're reimbursed.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Every other function at town does, we need a police officer out there, it covers that.
Yes.
It's okay, it's not just their normal duties on, when they're on duty.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, the other one on the $40,000, in this year's budget, our new budget, there was a $40,000 figure in there for pensions also that I wanted to get reduced. Now, you, I believe the council approved that $40,000 for next year. So this $40,000, because we're doing it now, is that new $40,000 in new budget like take the place of what we have to put up now?
The council, I think there were two $40,000 line items in the pension area. One of them was the result of the reduction of our expected return on investment. You may recall that, that, that over the years, we, we've been lowering that from, I think it was 7.25%. Our goal is to get it down to somewhere around 6% because, you know, things have changed from the past and our actuaries are recommending that we should, we should change that. And, and over the years, the council has, has slowly whittled that down. I think we skipped it last year, but we, we recommended that we, you know, we, we need to keep funding our pension. The second, the second item had to do with our actuaries' recommendation that because people are living longer, that they have to take that into account. And when people live longer, you should put more money into the pension. So they were recommending $40,000 additional for each of those two items. The council did not feel that doing 40, doing $80,000 this year was, was appropriate, so they, so they only put in the additional 40. And because we had some monies coming back from us, from another source, they, they felt that we could pay the other 40 in the current fiscal, in the current fiscal year with an additional appropriation before the year ended.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry for the long explanation, but it was
No, well, it's a little confusing because
In two ways. One of them was the lower expectations, return on investment, and the second one was because people were living longer. Rather than absorb all of that in, in next year's budget, the council decided only to absorb half of it, but still fund the other half using some, some dollars that came back.
So this budget year coming up, we should be taken care of?
Yes.
With 40 plus?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a good chance that next year, we'll be asking for the council to, to now, you know, to make up that 40 in the next fiscal year. So hopefully, it'll only be a $40,000 increase next year. So for, you know, we, we need to increase it by 80, 40 this year and perhaps 40 next year.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else?
Joanne.
Oh, Joanne.
Yeah.
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. I'm a confused. Remember when Dominic used to say that? Dominic DiNofrio. I loved it. It seemed to me two weeks ago, there was talk about the Board of Education needing more money. Is this 230, whatever it is, part of that, is, is that something to go to the Board of Education? In other words, haven't they established their budget and now we've got to give them more money?
No, the answer is no.
No. What is it? I thought they needed some more money for some kind of security at the high school or something.
That was capital improvement. That was discussed in a work session earlier today, but this public hearing has to do with additional appropriation for police overtime and addition, and additional appropriation for pension, not, not anything for the schools.
Well, it's good that I'm bringing it up anyway because don't they get enough money? 62% of the pie and, and, I mean, the money just pours into the Board of Ed and the school system.
Joanne, okay, do you have anything to say about this particular
No, 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 no.
Public hearing regarding police overtime?
At least I got that other in.
Oh, you did.
I wasn't here earlier.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Okay, I'll, I'll close that one. And the third one regards illicit discharge and stormwater connection ordinance. Again, a brief overview, we, we talked about this with John Bossy at a previous work session and now we're going to take action on the ordinance.
Yes, the state of Connecticut is requiring cities and towns to take a more active role in, in monitoring and, and actually testing outfalls on, on storm sewage, pipes that go into streams and rivers. So this ordinance would cover that particular portion of that. It is going to cost us more dollars. We have some monies in next year's budget to cover it, probably not as much as the state wants us to, but we figure by the time they catch up to us, maybe we'll be up to where they want us to be. So, but a lot of this work is being done in-house with existing town staff, adding to their, their duties, and I appreciate the work that they do to, to at least get us to comply with this new mandate without necessarily going to consultants automatically and hiring somebody else to do it for us.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anybody wish to speak to public hearing number three regarding the illicit discharge and stormwater connection ordinance? Mr. Kissel?
John Kissel, 65 Forestville Avenue. I hope you don't think I'm being a wise guy tonight, but I have a lot of questions.
You are monopolizing us. It's okay.
Going to extend the meeting. Well, we're not having one, only one next month, so this will make up for it. I know we need an ordinance like this because you can't have people or businesses or factories dumping hazardous stuff down our storm sewer. But I want to know if, if most of you on the council read this or skimmed over it at all. I mean, I, I did, I skimmed it and it's nine pages long and I was wondering where it came from. I'm sure a lot of it is standard and I know Mr. Bossy probably didn't write this up because he's so thorough, it would have probably been 18 pages. So anyway, you know, you have a severability clause in it, I guess that's standard in any ordinance. One part's bad, found illegal, you throw it out. But the other thing, you know, one of our biggest polluters that I think is right off of our road runoff between oil and gas and antifreeze from our cars and trucks and then in the winter with salt and the, the pretreatment stuff. And I know it gets a lot of oil. If you ever have a long dry spell and you get a rain, everything is slick and it's all oil. So that's one of the biggest things, I think, that are contributor to the pollution and that storm drains going into the river. But there's one thing I found in there that I thought was a little trivial. It's number nine. Car washing. You have to be careful when you're washing your car in your driveway to make sure the soapy water doesn't go into the storm drain. I mean, I don't know how many people that's going to happen to, but I found that in there. That's, that's how much stuff this, this ordinance touches. So I just want to remind everybody, if you wash your car in the driveway, make sure that soapy water goes on your grass, gets absorbed into the ground, doesn't go into the storm drain, or Mr. Lee might catch you because he's in charge. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing regarding the ordinance? Anybody else? Okay, thank you for your comments. I will close the public hearings. Thanks for your participation. I'll move on to item number three, minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 3rd, 2019, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number four, announcements and reports. Do we have any this evening?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Last week, I, as a council liaison, I attended two meetings. Committee on Aging on Thursday, just, just two highlights from there. You may have read in the newspaper that they are, it's almost in place, they are going to be starting another ride service for people who need rides to medical appointments. It's called the Senior Transportation Service. A very, very good program. They're looking to complete their number of required volunteers that are drivers. It's excellent and, and it's something that I think is really going to complement some of the other services such as Dial-A-Ride at the senior center. They also talked about their booth at the 150th, they are going to be participating. And then on Wednesday, I attended the Conservation Commission meeting. They elected officers. Marge Burris is continuing as chair, Randall Paz as secretary, and Jeff Seppco as vice chairperson. They had about a dozen people turn out at the beginning of the month for the June Trail Day hike. It was around the Pinnacle area, they went up to Will Warren's dead. Pretty ambitious hike they do for that Trail Days. And that's a statewide program and Plainville was listed in all the different statewide publications that came out. And just the other thing, some time ago at a council meeting, I mentioned that the Conservation Commission was looking at the issue of fracking waste and the use and disposal, transfer, sale of that. And a number of towns and municipalities had been doing individual ordinances banning that. The commission did ultimately opt to monitor the initiatives that were being taken at the state level. They were very pleased that Senate Bill 753 did get passed by both the Senate and the House and I, we hope that it's going to be signed by the governor and sort of takes care of the issue on a statewide basis. And so they had been following that for some time now, so I thought it was worth mentioning that it's been taken care of on the state level.
Awesome.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for your report. Does anybody else have anything to add?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On Wednesday, I had the honor of attending the Chamber of Commerce up at Chippenee and reporting on the state of the town. And I was able to report on our 150th anniversary, the Farmington Heritage Trail, the, our budget results in fiber optics. And it was, it was a great opportunity and I, I'm really glad I got to go.
Good, they're a nice group. It's always fun to go to that. Thanks for, thanks for doing that.
Sure.
Does anybody else have anything to add? Any other reports? I did not attend the last Board of Education meeting as I was out of state, but I do want to congratulate the graduates of 2019 from Plainville High School. Tomorrow is their big, big evening. There's been lots of, lots of events surrounding end of school activities throughout the district and tomorrow night is the culmination of the high school. So the weather is being watched with a close eye, right Jesse?
Yeah, very close.
Jesse's son is graduating tomorrow night, so it's going to be indoors, outdoors, indoors, outdoors. But I do want to extend my congratulations to, to all the graduates. That's a big event and certainly a great achievement. And I know that some worked very, very hard to get through high school and the requirements and I couldn't be prouder of all of them that, that will be walking across the stage tomorrow. So congratulations again. If there are no other announcements and reports, we'll move on to appointments and resignations. All right. Number one, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A motion to accept with regret the resignation of Anna Smetik from the Committee on Aging.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Can we send her a nice letter? She's been on there for quite a while, is that right?
Yes, Anna has, former neighbor of mine, actually, has been on for, for many years, was a very dedicated member of the Committee on Aging and I think definitely, yes, she would appreciate a letter. I think she would really like that.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Andrew Chapman from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to remove Ashley Gantner and Andrew Moore from the Fire Department due to lack of participation and accept with regret the resignation of Matthew Ferguson.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have another few to do.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Desiree Gorski from the Housing Authority.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Deanna Tino, 22 Pearl Street, to Housing Authority for term ending January 31st, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number six, Board of Education liaison. I'm not here. Town attorney, reported to town manager, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I have a couple of items, the first of which is the Capital Region Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan update. The Capital Region Council of Governments is updating the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan for the region's 38 cities and towns. The purpose of the plan is to identify natural hazards likely to affect the Capital Region and its nearly 1 million residents, assess vulnerabilities, sorry about that, to the hazards, and set forth mitigation strategies that will reduce the loss of life and property, economic disruptions, and the cost of post-disaster recovery for the region's communities. Mylona McBroom was contracted by CROG to put together the update to the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. Dave Murphy is the project manager from Mylona McBroom and is, he is here this evening to give an overview and specifically the section of the plan that deals with Plainville. There is a resolution on the new business regarding the Hazard Mitigation Plan update for 2019 to 2024. With your permission, I'd like to ask Mr. Murphy to step forward and give a brief presentation on the recommended plan and to answer any questions you may have on the same.
Sure, thank you. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Microphone picking me up? Great. I'm David Murphy from Mylona McBroom. This is a presentation on the town in Plainville's third time participating with a hazard mitigation plan, but the first time participating with the CROG Capital Region Plan. As you may remember, a few years ago, Plainville was part of the Central Connecticut Regional Planning Agency, which was dissolved. So a third time as part of a plan, first time as part of the Capital Region Plan. A quick agenda for this evening, we'll just talk about the purpose and need for hazard mitigation planning, how can the plan be used, what hazards were included. We'll go through some hazard mitigation strategies that were applied throughout the region for this plan. We'll talk about some successes and you'll notice some should be familiar to you as we get to those slides. We'll talk about the proposed actions for Plainville and then end with the next steps. Okay, so the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 is what really kicked off hazard mitigation planning in this country. And the goal of the act is to encourage preparedness, loss of life, et cetera. I don't mean to downplay that, but what the act really was about was FEMA saying, listen, we can't just give money to everybody all the time for every disaster, although that still happens to some extent, but if we undertake mitigation, we can reduce our costs going forward because actions that we take right now will reduce costs later on after disaster. With the plan in place, the town is eligible for three types of mitigation grants, which are the three last bullets on the slide. The pre-disaster mitigation program, the flood mitigation assistance program, and the hazard mitigation grant program, HMGP. The third one, actually, there's a grant open right now. Deadline for applications is due in July, not suggesting that the town should rush out and apply, but, but what, what's nice about the grant being open is it kind of shows that they come around frequently. So the plan is covering natural hazards. These are extreme natural events like floods, tornadoes, et cetera. And hazard mitigation, these are actions that we take ahead of time to reduce the losses going forward. So what I like to say on this slide is that if you have sandbags, that's great, but that's a little bit of response action. It's not really mitigation. It does help you prevent the flooding damage, but you have to go put them out there and if you're not available to deploy them, they're not going to do their job. If you elevate a building ahead of time, which is the left-hand picture, or if you remove buildings from the flood plain, which is the right-hand picture, these are both taken from Meriden, which has a big flood control project that they undertook a couple of years ago. If you take those actions ahead of time, you reduce the, the losses when a flood occurs. So that's true mitigation rather than the sandbags. How can the plan be used? How can the plan be used? This is my favorite part of the presentation because we talk about how states and towns really do get money from FEMA. And these two graphics come from FEMA. The left graphic shows the darker colored states are receiving the lion's share of the mitigation grants. You can see tornado alley, New York, California, so either more populated or more disaster-prone states. Actually, Midwestern states, not just tornadoes, but also the floods going on right now. But Connecticut's kind of in a darker color. And if you look on the right-hand side, the top five mitigation project types in the last fiscal year that was funded, acquisitions of buildings, flood control projects, elevations of buildings. But that fourth category, utility and infrastructure protection, is one where Connecticut really does clean up, gets a lot of projects funded, stormwater, culverts, bridges, et cetera, that sort of thing. I personally worked on the landslide project, which was to protect infrastructure. So there are ways to get funding for these kinds of projects. And so with that, here are some of the kinds of projects that can be funded. So acquiring buildings, elevating buildings in floodplains, replacing culverts, drainage projects, riverbank stabilizations have been funded. I've worked on a couple of those. I mentioned on the last slide, I've worked on the landslide project. Really less frequently, you'll see wind, seismic, and snowload projects. But that last bullet's the one that's really the most fun for towns, right? Who doesn't like to buy a generator? Everyone could find a reason to have a generator. So a lot of towns in the state have had good luck getting grants from FEMA for standby power supplies. So the hazards that we included in the plan are the same as the last time, essentially floods, hurricanes, tornadoes, severe winter storms, droughts, forest fires, dam failure, earthquakes. And the state requires us by statute, and the feds also require us to address climate change where applicable, so really all the hazards except earthquakes. The hazard mitigation strategies that we looked at are the same six categories as the last couple of times Plainville was involved in a hazard mitigation plan. So these are the six categories. They're pretty self-explanatory. So natural resource protection is like setting aside open space. Property protection could be storm shutters or elevating a building. I think the one that's kind of hard to know intuitively is prevention. So that doesn't mean preventing the incident from occurring. We can't really prevent a severe rainstorm. It means preventing the damage. So that category includes building codes. So if you take these six categories and you kind of toggle through the Capital Region, which is a huge region, it's the largest of the planning regions in the state, it's 38 towns, and quite a diversity of towns in the region, from small Endover to Hartford, for example. If you take those categories and look at some of the successes that have occurred, and I hinted earlier, you recognize something in this presentation, we've actually been using the Quabic River property acquisitions as a mitigation success story in the other towns in the region. And we've been telling them, look at, you can do it too. Here's a really good example from the region, and they've been doing it in part with FEMA money over the years. And this plan is what makes the town eligible to apply for these grants, for these buyouts. So the plan is really a necessary funding vehicle. Some other successes in the region, in other towns, you've probably all seen, as you've driven up 91, the Hartford Boathouse, when there's a flood, it's wet floodproofed, which means after a flood, it can be cleaned out quickly. I snapped some pictures of new drainage systems in New Britain, which presumably were upsized. A covert in Farmington that was upsized to reduce flooding on the upstream side. We wanted to get some examples from some of the towns that had joined the planning region, especially some of the more distant towns. Here's a slide on Mansfield, Town of Mansfield Low Impact Development Regulations. We wanted to have a couple microgrids. The state has a pretty robust microgrid program going on right now. I believe it is still funded. And so there's a Parkville Hartford neighborhood microgrid. I think what's cool about this microgrid is that it does power one private property, which is a grocery store, which is considered a critical facility. That's typically the key for a microgrid, is you need to have a critical facility involved. South Windsor has a new EOC, or the EOC has a new roof, which they say can withstand a category three hurricane, and we will take their word for it. A couple websites for public information category. I think I have clips here from Windsor and West Hartford. So just going to dive right into the Plainville mitigation actions. Plainville has about 38 actions in this addition of the plan, which is a lot. About a third of them were carried forward from the previous plan because they weren't completed or additional work was needed. I have the slides kind of just organized in categories. So this first set, and the next slide is also related to flooding. So we have some actions about designating a town floodplain coordinator, contacting owners of the repetitive loss properties. Those are the properties that have two or more flood claims on their flood insurance. We've got actually two actions about those. One of them is the town could use some cleanup of its list of repetitive loss properties. Not all the properties that have been removed are adequately noted on the list and should be. We've got a couple actions about information, public information, the last two bullets here. Additional flood-related actions about stormwater. I've got a couple about stormwater. We've got a little bit about zoning, the floodplain overlay zone. We've got an action about removing obstructions from watercourses. We've got an action about conducting a town wind drainage study. Perform an assessment of additional in-stream structures, like small dams, working with upstream communities, especially since you have some that are upstream and you have worked with them on some planning studies already. Some additional work along the Picoabic River. Some work at the wastewater treatment plant, if found cost-effective for additional floodproofing. Got a couple actions about bridges. We've got an action about outreach to small businesses, which is a statewide initiative, sorry, statewide businesses, is a statewide initiative that was given to the region. And Connecticut DEEP said, we'd like to see this action in all the plans. We've got an action about working with Nemo and the Capital Region Council of Governments on stormwater MS4 compliance. We've got an action about participating in additional education for town staff. Moving on from flooding, we've got actions about emergency services, such as forming assert, constructing a new emergency operations center, using the reverse 911, using GIS for emergency response and planning, working with internet providers, some actions on this slide about communications, having some formal agreements with other communities, mutual aid agreements essentially. I said Plainville had 38 actions, didn't I? We've got a couple on standby power, a couple on wildfires, and last category, this other, we've got something about zoning, entering sustainable CT program, something about the POCD update, which I believe is underway, and they're working to document historic resources in zones of flood risk. The really important thing to say about all these actions is this is a shopping list for grants. This is not an unfunded mandate. You do not have to go and complete all these in the next five years. I think that's a really important thing to understand when resolutions are signed, is you're not locking yourself into doing all of these things the next five years. It is a pretty short timeframe, five years. There isn't any way that any town can get through their entire list. But again, it's a shopping list, so when the grants come out and you see the preface on the grant, when the state agency says, we're looking for these kinds of projects, you can go through and match up what might be aligned with that grant program. So next step is to hopefully have the resolution adopted and signed. You can return that to the COG, and we'll gather them all up and get this back to FEMA. And hopefully the town will continue using grants if wanted.
Does anybody have any questions regarding the presentation? There is a lot of stuff on there. Our list is pretty long.
I hope I didn't talk too quickly, but I wanted to keep it moving through and get through it.
Okay, all right. Any questions tonight? Thank you very much for coming and explaining.
You're welcome.
Okay.
My intention is to sit down with staff. Some of it is cleanup, you know, that we may have already done, or we need to, you know, get documented. Others will be, you know, looking at perhaps strategies to, you know, perhaps seek future grants as well, so.
Yep. There's one item on there, assert, CRT program, and I'm a little familiar with that. My brother lives in Arizona, and he's a member of one of those. And he's a private citizen, but he's trained to work with the fire company. They have big events. He can be there to provide water and do some things just to keep everything moving along. So it's kind of an interesting concept.
Because we are part of the Plainville-Suddington Health District, Suddington has a CERT team.
Oh.
And one of the emergency coordinators down there is the health director, Shane Lockwood. I think he's the assistant to Town Manager down there, Mark Shoddy, I believe is the head of their emergency kind of planning. And so we have occasionally used their CERT team to assist us with occasional things that may happen up here in Plainville.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Very often, but we.
Thanks again.
We've taken advantage of them.
Okay.
There's no other questions on item one. I'll go on to number two, which is the road bond discussion and what I'm affectionately calling Phase Two. The Bond Council has drafted an ordinance appropriating $5 million for Phase Two Road and Related Improvements Program and authorizing the issue of bonds and notes in the same amount to finance the appropriation. You have a copy of that proposed ordinance. There is an item on the new business to conduct a public hearing on the proposed ordinance for July 15th at 7:00 PM in the Town Council chambers. And that's with the hope, if it moves forward, of keeping the schedule of perhaps having this on the November election for the, you know, in lieu of a separate referendum and just put it on that ballot so that, you know, if we do that by September 5th, and the plan was to have the hearing on the, perhaps in the July meeting, and perhaps have the council take action on it in the August meeting, and then have it, you know, set up for the November election for consideration. Okay? Next item I have is the Murphy Road Recycling LLC Notice of Intent to Award. Recently, the Bristol Policy Board, of which I am a member, sought request for proposals for the recycling materials as required by state statute. The current contract with Murphy Road of Enfield is scheduled to end on June 30th, relatively short period of time. Murphy Road LLC of Enfield was the only response received by the Bristol Policy Board. Murphy Road is the current contractor and they operate a recycling facility in Berlin. So not in Enfield, they're from Enfield, but they operate a facility in Berlin. The Policy Board is currently negotiating the terms of the proposed contract for the next two years. Preliminary cost to dispose of recycling is $80 per ton with adjustments made based upon the market prices or revenues for the various materials. I will tell you, it's now cheaper to dispose of trash than it is to dispose of recycling. We hope that that changes at some point in time, but I just wanted to point that out. The Policy Board anticipates that the contract negotiations will not be completed before June 30th, and that it will be necessary to have what's being called a notice of intent to award for Murphy Road to continue to receive recycled materials from the 13 communities beyond this date. There is an item on the new business that would authorize the Town Manager to sign a notice of intent to award a contract to Murphy Road Recycling LLC. I was part of a meeting last week where we had conversations with Murphy Road. We're trying to finalize some of the terms of the contract. We don't believe that we'll have that in place by June 30th, when our contract runs out. So having the need for a location, and we, you know, we don't have much leverage with regards to this particular situation, you know, so we felt, at least as a group, we felt that having this notice of intent to at least go forward with the monetary terms until we're able to finalize the contractual terms makes sense. So that's why we have it under new business this evening. If there's no questions on that, we have the plan.
Can I ask you a question, Madam Chair? For our budget, what did we anticipate we'd be paying per ton for the 2020 budget? Was it $60 a ton?
$40 a ton.
$40 a ton. Are towns in Connecticut starting to move away from recycling?
No.
Not yet?
They're encouraging the state to do something about it, but it's a state requirement that we recycle.
I'm not saying I'm in favor of that, I was just questioning.
I'm not aware of any towns that have defied that at this point in time. Some of them have talked tough, we should just, you know, not recycle anymore, but I'm not aware of any towns that have actually taken that action. I will tell you that I was at another program last week, the Council of Small Towns Annual Meeting, end of legislative session, there was a, James Alvis was there from DEEP, and he indicated that DEEP feels that the recycling environment is going to stabilize and that, you know, the prices will come down over time. So that's why we're trying to keep the contract as short a period of time as, you know, as we can until we see where recycling is going. But there are provisions in this particular arrangement with Murphy Road that if they get more revenues for the recycling, that, you know, the $80 a ton would actually decrease. So it's possible that that could decrease down to the $40 a ton depending upon, you know, what happens with recycling. But it could also increase as well. So, you know, I will tell you that, you know, City of Waterbury signed a, you know, a five-year, I believe it was a five-year contract for something even north of $80 a ton, and other communities are doing the same. Willimantic waste is more competitive, less expensive, but it's further away so that there's cost to, you know, to truck it there. But in contacting them, they're full up right now, so they're not taking any more recyclables. So that's not an option either, when I talked about the leverage that we have to go to other places. We have also spoken to Govanta about whether they'd be willing to burn the recyclables instead of actually recycle and, you know, and pay $65 a ton, $80 a ton. They indicated that they would not do that based on the current law and the bad press that they got down in Philadelphia when they did that, you know, at the request of some of the cities and towns. And never mind that it does impact their actual operation because recycled material would actually burn hotter and that could cause some adjustments to their operation as well.
I guess I'm just concerned that what are we going to be looking at come fourth quarter of next year?
Right.
You know, because we're, for those who aren't aware, we receive revenue now. This is going from.
We receive $10 a ton, yes.
We're going from, so it's a net $90 per ton loss.
Swing.
Yeah, so.
Those are the times, the challenges that we face.
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
You know.
There are some other states, you know, it's not just Connecticut, of course, it's nationwide. And there are some states who have stopped recycling, and they're now just putting everything into their trash and whatever their circumstances are of their state, but there are states that have stopped doing it because of this whole situation we have.
Yeah, it's concerning.
Oh, it is.
From a financial standpoint, I find it very concerning for next year.
It is.
And there was some suggestion, a lot of it has to do with contamination, the people who recycle, you know, that, you know, the recycled material gets contaminated, and that's why China will not take recycled material anymore from the United States because it's, you know, they feel that, you know, it's been degraded so that they're not willing to pay the price because it, you know, it doesn't pay from their end. So, you know, people who, for example, put glass in the recycled material and don't wash the glass, or at least get some of the heavy material out of it, that contaminates the white paper, which, you know, makes that less, you know, people can't recycle that degraded paper, you know, those types of items. So, you know, it's been, it's going to be a challenge over a period of time, but there is, there is some markets that seem to be developing in the United States. There's a paper plant that's reopening up in Maine that may, you know, we may see more of that, that will take, you know, some of this recycled material. So only time will tell, you know, where we're going to end up with this. But right now, we are exploring all options, but there aren't many.
Thank you.
Like I said, we only got one proposal. Next item we have is the financial dashboard, a copy of the dashboard, which was distributed to you earlier today. I believe it was posted on the town website. And I'd like to turn it over to Scott to go through that quickly. Quickly is the operative word, unless the council has a lot of questions, and then we'll be ready to answer any questions you might have after he finishes happenings.
So beginning this brief financial dashboard, looking at the expenditures through May 31st, the town budget is coming in at about expending $51.2 million out of a $60 million budget, which equates to about 85.37% right around our two-year average. And we are slightly under expending in the general government budget, and we are slightly over in the Board of Education budget compared to our two-year averages. Looking at the hauler tonnages, we are over our two-year average by about 360 tons, coming in slightly over 5,000 tons as of May 31st. Looking at the overtime reports, we are coming in over on police overtime as well as the buildings and grounds snow overtime. We are under, compared to our two-year averages, in the roadways, buildings and grounds, and roadway snow overtime reports. Looking at the revenues page, looking at all revenues and current taxes, we are over our two-year average, receiving at about 98.92% of all revenues and slightly over 100% on current taxes. And I just want to make a note that not noted in this month's dashboard, there was a transfer of the IUD property to Tomaso up on the mountain, which we received some back taxes on. We budgeted about $525,000 on that, so we're expected to see about $880,000 in that account. And that will show on next month's dashboard. Looking at the estimated unassigned fund balance as of June 30th of this year, we're looking at having about 14% or 8.1 million in that account. Moving on to the special funds accounts, everything appears to be in line with our two-year averages. The only items that still look like they're thrown off are for Robertson Airport expenditures, and these are just due to the project costs. And then the revenues are coming higher due to. And then the revenues, uh, are coming higher due to the reimbursements from the grants that we received, while that airport fund balance sits at about 536,000. And moving on to the major projects, uh, report, uh, there were a few items in here. Looking at the park improvement fund, uh, there was, uh, a minus in the, uh, about 18,000 for that, and that's just showing a negative due to, uh, a cost coming in under what was encumbered, uh, for that item. Uh, there was some, uh, money spent in the road bond project of about 51,000. And then for the phosphorus removal project, um, spent in May, uh, there was a pay rack at about 1.1 million. Uh, project is about 36.45% complete, while the Wheeler School project, uh, is coming in at about 35.85% complete with a pay rec, uh, of 1.3 million in May. And that concludes the financial dashboard unless there's any questions. If not, I'll move on to the happenings. Uh, I just have a few happenings. First to report on over at the Senior Center on Thursday, June 20th at 10:00 a.m., they're holding, um, a course on adaptive equipment. Many different pieces of equipment have been developed and created in order to help everyone maintain the best quality of life and promote their independence while keeping them safe. Come to this free program to learn more about adaptive equipment and what devices may work for you or a loved one. It's never too late to adapt. And on Thursday, June 28th at 9:30 a.m., they have a meet and greet for volunteer drivers. Um, if you are an adult driver and have few hours, uh, a month to support your community, you're invited to a meet and greet at the Senior Center on June 28th at 9:30 a.m. The seniors transportation services, Inc. provides rides to medical appointments for older adults and needs volunteer drivers. Drivers receive reimbursement for mileage and supplemental automobile and liability insurance. Volunteers provide as few as two rides per month and can choose the location they will drive to. Refreshments will be served. Uh, if you're interested in being a volunteer driver for the Plainville Senior Center, please call Sean Aranda at 860-747-5728. Moving on to the Plainville 150th Celebration, uh, which is taking place both Saturday and Sunday of July 20th and 21st, there will be a walking and bus tour of the historic sites. Maps and buses will be available at the municipal center, uh, for the, uh, tour which will take place Saturday, July 20th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And on Sunday, July 21st, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., there will be a family picnic at Norton Park. Please bring your chairs and blankets. There will be live music, food trucks, games and historic displays. For the entertainment lineup, the fun begins with the Old Time Fiddlers from 1205 to 1255, then the Senior Center Ukulele Group from 1, uh, 1:00 p.m. to 1:45 p.m. And then the Nazinga Daughters from 2:00 p.m. to 2:45 p.m., concluding with the New Britain Symphony Brass Ensemble from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. The 150th Committee will also be offering a custom-designed one-troy ounce fine silver heirloom quality commemorative coin to celebrate the Plainville sesquennial anniversary. One side of the coin will have "Celebrate Plainville, Connecticut, 1869 to 2019," and the other side will have the Liberty Torch along with the silver weight and content. There will be limited production, uh, of these items. Individuals can purchase these at a price of $35 each, and volunteers are still needed, uh, for those looking to assist with the event on both days, along with, um, the historic tour and the bus tours. For more information on either of the events, or if you're interested in volunteering or looking to purchase a commemorative coin, please visit the, um, Plainville, uh, 150th Facebook page, or send an email to plainvill150th@gmail.com. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Robert and Scott. Does anybody have any questions for Robert or Scott with their report tonight?
I'd just, I'd just like to point out that I believe Mr. Kizlik has sold the most coins so far for the ones that he's really walking the streets trying to, uh-
Yep. He's been devoted to that project. Okay, um, moving on, um, the next is our public comment section during this portion of our meeting. We welcome the public to come to, I guess, this podium to my left, your right. Um, you'll have one, one opportunity to speak for three minutes. Please state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? I don't have a sign-up sheet, so we're just going to take them as they come. No? Okay. John?
John Kissel, 65 Forest Avenue. Well, Scott and Robert probably hit it all on, uh, what's happening with our 150th anniversary with the coins. We had a meeting today. We are going to limit the coins to 300. We got about 85 to go. Rosemary's getting hers tonight, what she promised me.
I forgot my check, John. I'm embarrassed to admit.
You promised me.
There it is.
So anyway, we're, we're really working. We're, we're chasing people down, chasing businesses down. We have some help and, and it's going, it's going okay. Uh, one other thing I wanted to mention on recycle. Marilyn came up with an idea once. You know, um, when you train these kids in school, young kids in school, and, and you start with them, they can actually teach their parents. A lot of the stuff is done. When you start with these single-use plastic bags that, you know, everybody knows it's not supposed to go on recycle. If you have, I probably should bring it to the board of ed. They have things for the kids and train them so they can train their parents, that you don't put these single-use bags in recycle and, and different things for cleaning. It's a lot of times these kids really jump on that stuff more than the adults and they can train, train their parents, so just wanted to mention that too. Because that recycle, it, it, this is really bad with what's happening with that. You know, I really wish that we could burn a lot of that because, well, like Robert said, I guess it does burn hotter, but there'd be nothing left. It's just gone. The, the, the plastic is actually petroleum-based, it's, it'd be gone, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Nicole?
Nicole Palmieri, 20 Julie Road. I thought I would just update on some board of ed stuff. Um, last week we had a night of excellence and there was over $177,000 in scholarships given out to the kids. Um, graduation is tomorrow, hopefully it'll be outside. Um, last week we also had a reception for Maureen since she is leaving. Um, it was well-attended. Many people spoke, um, and it really showed how much people care about her and how much they're going to miss her. There were many tears. Um, Wings and Wheels was last weekend, um, and I want to thank all the kids who volunteered. We had several from the high school. And we had some realized savings from the budget and we voted to prepay some of our gas costs. Um, we brought back a literacy tutor and made a part-time tutor a full-time tutor again. Any questions? All right, thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Mr. Frangos?
Just a quick understanding on the, uh, what do you call this thing? The 290,000 from the unassigned fund balance, uh, how much of that was going to police overtime?
250,000.
250?
Right.
Okay, and then the remainder, the amount for the pensions?
Correct.
I'm sorry?
Yes, that's right.
How much was that?
Oh, 40.
40,000? Okay. I was just, uh, I'm kind of curious about that. Uh, the three officers, we're, we're now short three officers, is that illness or?
No, we're, they, they left us.
Okay.
Retirements, under the positions, you know, those types of things.
Okay, and, okay, that is pretty much-
It was a while ago, Lou. I mean, we, you know, these, this, this hap, a lot of these happened a year ago, then we have to recruit.
No, that, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that these are people who left a while ago, is what I'm saying.
Okay, and the reason I, I kind of backed off for a second, this is, this is the second time I brought this subject up. And when I brought it up the last time, we were at full force. That's why I'm kind of confused.
Well, we're, we're, we're full force, but they're not, they're not on the road yet. They can't, they can't operate until they go through the academy. I mean, we pay them when they're in the academy, we pay them when they're on full field training, but they're not out there on their own patrolling.
Gotcha. Thank you. Uh, and the other thing, the only question I have regarding the pensions, uh, I, I'm not an accountant, I'm not a finance man, but I would think that's pretty much a static number when you put a budget together. Why would we need more money put into a pension when it's developed for an annual usage? Does that make sense, the question?
Yes, I can answer if you want me to.
Please. I think we talked about it a little while ago, but you can certainly fill it in.
We do investments with regards to our pensions and depending upon how those investments go from year to year, the actuaries take a look at that and say, well, this year, you don't, you can put in a little bit less because, you know, the, the market was, was good in, in, in other years. In addition, there's two requirements that, that have, there's two conditions that have changed, one of which is the fact that our return on investment, uh, the, the actuaries are telling us that we need to lower our expectations from 7-point-something percent down to 6%. So in order to go from that, that expectation to the lower expectation, if we did it all in one year, that could be a significant increase, so we've been doing a little bit each year to get down to that. So it costs us a little bit more each year to make up for the fact that our expectation on return is, is, is lower. And the, and the last item is the fact that the actuaries have told us that life expectancy has greatly increased over the last 20 years. Some of our older people are actually living longer, uh, lives and, uh, and, and so as a result of that, you know, we have to account for that. And so that increases the amount we have to put in for pension as well.
And this, thank you. Uh, and the next general question is this financial dashboard. When was that put on the screen? Because I looked at it, and all I saw was April. April's listed, May wasn't-
This afternoon, I believe, was put on.
Then I have, because the front page of the, our sheet, the official sheet of the town, had April, uh, financial dashboard there. I, that's, and the way, right above it was Memorial Day, the offices will be closed.
That's what my staff told me and, uh, I didn't go check it myself because I had a copy of it myself.
No problem. Just, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Mr. Edmund?
Edmund, Joel Edmund, 63, Alleyber Lane.
Can, can you just wait for one moment? Can we reset? Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
No rail, no trail, and no thank you. The devastation of the, uh, tree canopy has already started on the Mule Hall towpath by state survey workers slashing down grown live trees and undergrowth with their machetes. They are a lot quieter than noisy chainsaws that alert the public of knowing what's going on. It's been said that the road to hell is paved with good intentions. This statement makes me think about the Heritage Trail Gap, proposed and town council approved through Plainville, that basically follows and built upon abandoned rail lines to New Haven Harbor. The problem is Plainville's rail line is still active, so outside planters have conjured up an unforgivable way to snake its through quiet neighborhoods and busy roads at almost double the distance to the future consternation of the joining neighbors and traffic. The majority of Plainville people do not want to see this happen, including myself. There was no referendum to decide this, only a few meetings where townspeople were basically exposed to being hoodwinked and a select few to believe that this would be a good thing for our downtown commercial enterprises. They mentioned that it would be like a shot in the arm for those select few. I say more like a shot in the head, uh, for everyone else that would become negatively affected. Actually, some of that negativity has already happened, like May 16th, when we experienced a motorcycle gang brawl and the trail has not even been constructed yet. There is an old saying about putting the cart before the horse. Hey now, it sure sounds like that is happening here in Plainville. Paving over town line road was a nice job, but ripping it up maybe soon to install storm sewers. No paving, uh, repaving on Northwest Drive, it was not that bad. Certainly not as bad as, as many other streets in town. Woodford Avenue, Pine Street, same thing. Pete Solomon declaring the trail from New Britain was already approved, but then Mr. Lee straightened him out by clarifying that it has not yet been approved. We will see how long that takes. I'm wondering why we have an inland wetlands commission when in reality they don't have any meetings, say, or input as to this trail going through wetlands and floodplains, even though-
Mr. Edmund, can you wrap up? Your time has expired.
Survey work has already started with stakes driven into, I'm almost done.
Okay, you got five seconds.
Middle of the Mule Hall towpath and the machete slashing and cutting down of live trees.
Thank you.
That sounds to me like it's illegal as well as aligning the trail to Norton Park. I have one more paragraph to go.
Oh, next time, probably would be good.
Maybe my sister Joanne can finish it off for me.
Okay.
Um, no rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Right, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Yeah, last paragraph, right there. Right there. Right here, okay. I don't see what he put in there, but, you know.
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. I'm going to finish up what my brother started. It's too bad he couldn't have a little more time. What's the big deal? These Connecticut Transit and Connecticut Fast Track, what, what's-
Empty buses.
Pardon?
Empty buses, or almost empty buses.
Or, or empty, or almost empty buses that practically follow each other, uh, through Plainville, really aggravate me. What a waste of taxpayer money wearing their, themselves out while helping to tear up our roads. These linear park slash trail from New Britain to Plainville is basically a slower version of that boondoggle. God help us. No rail, no trail, and no thank you. And I, my part of it is I want to, I strongly oppose, and this is for Carol and, and the minutes of record, I strongly oppose, I, I'd better, I'm better saying it myself. I strongly oppose alignment C and any other alignment that affects and negatively impacts Perron Road, Pierce Street, Broad Street, Hemingway Street, into the park, and specifically the Mule Hall Trail. Like my brother said, they've already started work on it. It's like driving a stake into the heart of history. I, I hope this is noted by the Historical Society because the Mule Hall Trail should not be desecrated and that's exactly what's happening. If they are going to use that trail for this stupid trail that's going to be coming up, I, I strongly oppose that. And, um, let's see what else. There was something else I wanted to say. Speaking, oh, well, a couple of weeks ago, this is important, a couple of weeks ago, uh- Well, a couple of weeks ago, this is important, a couple of weeks ago, Lou Frangos brought up what's going to happen over there at the high school with the football field, and as far as I'm concerned, who's going to pay for it? Robert Lee said it's not going to be touched for another eight, nine years. Well, we've got, what, four years into it already? I heard that it, it has to be rechange, or change, that, that crumb rubber crap has to be changed, dug up and, and put somewhere and changed like every seven years. So, it seems to me that this fundraising that they have for it is not going to be enough money. So, what happens when the time comes that they dig up this, the current crumb rubber crap and put in some new crumb rubber crap? And that's exactly what it is. It's, it's chemical ridden and very, very dangerous for those that use it. And who's going to pay for it? They're not going to raise enough money to pay for that. It's going to be the taxpayer that's going to be hit. Can you wrap up, Joanne, your time has expired? Okay. Thank you. So, I want everybody to think about that. Okay. It, it is not a good thing. And yes, we do have a crisis at the border, and diseases too. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Yes, sir?
Like to read from the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States, the first part of it. "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." Meaning, the founders, when they wrote this, they were thinking of where they had come from and what had gone on in England where government sanctioned a religion, the Church of England. They didn't want to have any part of that, and they did not want to prohibit people from exercising their right of freedom of religion. Okay, I sing and perform with the Senior Citizen Corral Group. We prepare 15 or 20 songs a month. We rehearse them, and we bring them and perform them for the residents at three rest homes. Two of these rest homes have Catholic affiliations. Among those 15 or 20 songs, since last September, we've been including one song that's, could be, might be a hymn or another song of faith in one, one, one way or the other, you know, religious oriented song. Probably takes three or four minutes to perform. We do not pray with the residents, we do not proselytize. Couple of weeks ago, Rhonda and Sean from the Senior Center came in like a couple of wet blankets and threw it over the group and told us we could not any longer perform this one song a month, because what they were quoting was the separation of church and state, which is not in the Constitution and is not a law. So, there is a form of religious censorship and intolerance going on from the leadership of the Senior Center focused against our corral group. And I personally, I, I think it's, it's illegal, it's, well, maybe it's not illegal, but it isn't from the essence of the Constitution, where we're supposed to have somewhat of a religious expression. I don't know what the big deal is. I don't know why they're stopping it, and they seem to be hedging a little bit, as if they might be acting from a directive of somebody else. I mean, I, I don't know, I might be speculating a little bit, but it seems like they've made a decision and it may not have come directly from themselves. So, I would like to see something happen where we are allowed this little constitutionally permitted expression, free expression of religion by singing one three or four minute song a month to two Catholic rest homes and one secular one. So, um.
Thank you.
I don't know, they, they've really demoralized our group. I think it was totally unnecessary, and I don't know why they would think this was going to be so harmful to people. I mean, they, they talk about maybe we're offending people. I'm kind of offended by their anti-Christian, anti-religious attitudes, but it's okay to offend Christians these days.
Can you wrap up? I appreciate that.
I think I've said enough, and I hope.
Understood.
You take this to heart and rectify it.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not spoken this evening? Roberta?
Roberta Loria, 18 Perron Road. For the benefit of Carol and Town Council minutes this evening, I would like to say that I oppose any trail or alignment that will be on next to or have an impact on any neighborhood in Plainville, especially Perron Road and Pier Street. Mr. Edmund brought up a few moments ago regarding the gang brawl that took place here in town on May 16th, the fact that we had to get assistance from other towns. I sincerely hope this town council has seriously considered and looked into further investigating being done by the State Attorney General's Office or the state police. We can't have this happen again. On another note, you'll be happy to know that many people do watch and rely on Nutmeg TV. They also have still old phone books, based on the calls I received. During these calls, the question that these people came to me with was, and the question I received the most was, what was said to you? I told those people what happened and what was said to me by this town employee. Some of the rest residents questioned during these phone calls, why, one, the town employee was allowed to do this, and, two, why was this individual, did not have to have their mic on during this, so that could be clearly heard by Nutmeg TV? This is not the first time comments have been made, remarks have been made, in which the mic did not pick this up because it was not on. I would like to suggest that you have this town employee keep their mic on for all to hear during public comments, or have extra money be spent to have an extra camera on, because people watching do have a right to know things that are being said here this evening.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Yes, sir?
I wanted to start off with a couple of things on Norton Park. The concession stand that they put up, I like it, very nice. I think it could use a town sign or something, right there in the, the middle. I think that would complete it, it would look very good, especially during the balloon festival. The other thing I wanted to comment on was the, the police on the bike, apparently it's been reinstated, love that, makes, makes everyone feel a lot safer. And he's a friendly guy. I did walk with Joel today on the, the mule path. There's a ton of wildlife there. It has been cleared out, there's a bunch of stakes there. The amount of devastation that this trail is going to do to that is just really bad. And I, I also have to wonder why the, the Inlands and Wetlands Committee is not in on this at all. I mean, that's their purview, that's what they do, they report to you, not to the town manager. So, I don't think any trail without their input is, is, is right. Otherwise, why have them? I mean, are, are they there because people throw trash behind their house into a wetlands? There's 100,000 square feet of wetlands that are going to be impacted by this trail, and the town of Plainville citizens have zero input right now. It's all, it's all state Department of Environmental Protection. And, and my, my, I guess the question I asked many months ago, the answer came back was, because they work, the Inlands and Wetlands reports to the Connecticut Department, they don't report to them, they report to the town council, that's you guys. Now, if you want to cede your authority and, and let them do whatever they want, the Plainville Wetlands, go right ahead and do it, but, but it's egregious, I, it's bad. The last thing I wanted to talk about was Paterosi Park. People on Facebook commenting on it's, it's kind of getting bad, overgrown, so maybe something with the conservation committee, we can go there, try to clean it up. But again, I can't emphasize enough, especially with this presentation from, from the state here saying, talking about floodplain development, and this trail is going through floodplains, a mile of floodplain, and, and I don't know how you reconcile it with, with, with what they're saying here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Okay, thank you for your comment. We'll move on. We do not have any old business items this evening, so we will move on to our new business items. May I have a motion for number one, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "Ordinance Establishing Fourth Quarter Transfers to the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2019."
Second, a second. Any, any comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appropriate $290,000 from account 01000321110, unassigned fund balance to accounts outlined for the fiscal year 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt an ordinance entitled, "Elicit Discharge and Storm Water Connection Ordinance."
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "Resolution Adopting the Capital Region Natural, Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Update 2019 to 2024."
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, July 15, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the municipal center to hear public comment regarding a proposed ordinance entitled, "Ordinance Appropriating $5 Million for the Phase II Road and Related Improvements Program and Authorizing the Issue of Bonds and Notes in the Same Amount to Finance, to Finance the Appropriation."
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to authorize the town manager to sign a notice of intent to award a contract to Murphy Road Recycling LLC substantially as proposed in the response to the solicitation of RFP number 2019 BR01, as presented at a meeting at town council on June 17, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seven.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you for all that. Do we have any other discussions of interest this evening?
Just one item of clarification, the work that's being done out with regards to the trail in the southern end of town, the state surveyors are performing, you know, they're doing survey work out there, in order for them to do, accomplish the survey work, they have to be able to see, you know, the distances, and so they are removing some vegetation in order to get the sightlines for the survey work that they're doing. It's a little premature to talk about how many acres or, or how much wetlands is going to be involved because it, you know, with the trail, because it hasn't been, you know, finalized where it's, exactly where it's going to be located, so, you know, people can speculate about, about it, but it's a little premature to say, you know, this many acres are going to be disturbed as a result of the, of the, the plan, since it's not finalized yet.
Okay, thank you for that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to move into executive session for union contract negotiations.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.